Recordings on, we're ready to go? There, I think it is. Today's date is August twenty first, twenty twenty five, we're meeting in the council chambers, Twilla County courthouse. Our first item on the agenda is roll call, we'll begin over here please with Marissa. You just introduce yourself and who you represent, please.
Marissa Menzio, and Twilla City Council.
Mary Ann Twill City.
Eric Strummer, Twill County.
Troy Hoffman, Twill County.
Jared Hamner, Twill County.
Ryan Johnson, Rush Valley.
John Olson Vernon.
Craig Smith, Erda.
Kritzlow, Grantsville.
Andrew Mary Stockton.
Kathleen Von Hatl, Lake Point.
Colonel Bryan Seans and Doug Wayne Proving Brown.
Chris Timor, Doug Wayne Proving Brown.
Thank you for being here and we recognize staff. Megan and Brittany and Andy and Nathan, who are here from the county and appreciate you being here as well. First item on the agenda, public comments, do we have any comments from the public or questions?
Concerns.
Okay, seeing none, we will-
The whitest I've ever seen Kendall, I didn't know-
He's making up for it in his brightness. So our next item will be a presentation, economic development website demo by Andy.
I'll start this off and then Brittany will actually do the demonstration for us. So, one of the things is, as I think as we know, we need to have more jobs staying in the valley and so we need to do a better job in recruiting. And so one of the things that we want to do collectively is to have a website just for informational purposes as prospects are looking at where to locate. This would just be a place where they can come and start the process, learn about our community, all of our communities. And then if they have more specific questions for Grantsville or Twilla or whoever that is, then by all means we would direct them to the appropriate jurisdiction. And so, we put together this website, it's called Grow Twilla. And I'll have Brittany kind of go over that, we demoed this to the council a couple of days ago, then to the Economic Opportunity Advisory Board today. There are still some things we need to get cleaned up, we'd like to present it so you can see it, look at it, recommend some changes, if you want to change anything, please send them to us. But it's called growtwilla.com is the website, so it's up and running right now. We just haven't published it, kind of generally speaking yet. So I'll have Brittany kind of go through just some of the sections of what we've included in there and if there's anything you'd like to add, just please let us know.
So you guys are aware, this actually came about as an idea from the Economic Opportunity Board because when we met at the beginning of the year, we talked about how we could collectively come together to help just bring businesses to the community. And this would be a place where people could find where they fit best, whether it be in Grantsville or Twilla or Erda or Lake Point or not Vernon probably or Rush Valley. Anyhow, I'm joking, we want to include everybody. But, so, so the- I reviewed this with the board today and as I explained to them, this is a very beta version. There are items that need to be fixed, so, but just we'll go over it quickly. There's this homepage and when you come down, it kind of just talks about Twilla, where it's located, what we can offer, so it talks about the location. None of these are linking to anything right now, I noticed that today. So like I said, beta version. There's other items that are pretty cool. So this just talks about, it talks about incentives, knowing that none of us have incentives that we're saying. This is saying those are types of incentives, so it walks through federal incentives, Utah incentives, where they can find these and information on them, and then local incentives. These are possibilities of local incentives that could be, it's not saying that this would happen. I just want to be clear on that. I don't know if you guys have seen this site, this is actually LoopNet, it's something that businesses use all over the nation. And I would talk to John Perez today from Twilla City and he says he actually gets companies call and ask for more in-depth information on a lot of these sites. So this is pretty cool, identifies different sites throughout the community. So this just links to this, which is awesome. And this goes through why you would come here. Sorry, I don't know if you guys want, how in-depth you want me to go on this, but the, this goes through. So these are reports that we receive, they're always three years behind sadly, or two years behind. But it just talks about these are the biggest employers that we have out here. There's other data that we have been getting provided from better cities that's included on here. This goes through the technical school, custom fit and services that workforce services provides. This is the links that go to those, it talks a little bit more in-depth about the educational opportunities we have out here. This has the data I was referring to earlier. So if you've ever dealt with trying to get a business here, these are types of things that they look at to come to areas. So this goes through all of the income. It goes through county rankings, jobs, types of construction that they would need, and industry detail. This has all of our demographic data, so this is linked to something that will, every time the state updates, the state data will also update the county and city data. And so this is an automatic update that happens every time it gets reported and changed.
Brittany, does it take into account future growth? Did you put anything on there about?
Not at this time.
Okay.
This is so that, so if someone says I want to look at what Twilla County as a whole has to offer, this is what they have.
But don't you think a business coming would want to know what the future looks like as far as?
Yes, future projections. This kind of talk, this links to our tourism webpage, so they understand the other functions that we have to offer out here. And then this is where it has the local contacts and I know that it's outdated for Grantsville and then we had a suggestion today from the board to have members from the other communities on there that aren't called out. So if you want somebody from your community on there, I just need you to email who that is and their information. And so, and these link straight to, so like I'll just do the example, this would link straight to Twilla City so then they can contact or get, dig a little bit more into Twilla City. Or whatever city they would like. And then the state contacts, this has our EDC Utah and our GOEO contacts on here and the Business Resource Centers. So, like I said, it's just a beta version and as you can see, it's not logoed with the Twilla County, our logo. We wanted it to be very us together as a, as a whole. And we are hosting the site, but we want to make sure that you guys have input in the data that goes on, especially if it's representing your area, so. And to do that, you just send it to me and Andy and we will make it happen.
Questions or comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful idea. But I'd like to see something on there about what maybe some of the future ideas or goals or what the, what you're looking at in the future as far as population or what the trends are or something. I would think a business, they might look at this, first thing they're going to ask is, well, what are the trends? Are you going up or are you going down? I mean, what's your outlook? I would think that would be important, but I'm not, I just grow cows, so I don't know.
Well, after our meeting on Tuesday with our recorder saying, you know, he's talked to developers and they're expecting another five thousand houses in the next five years or whatever. Do the math, that's fifteen to twenty thousand people. The growth is coming and so that's, that's capital, because that's, they're going to look for the workforce. That's what businesses are looking for, do we have the workforce? We absolutely do because a lot of them go that way. So it's more than we can capture this way, the easier it is on all of us for roads and everything else, so.
Well, and if a restaurant or something is looking for more people to make their place viable, then that might-
Yeah, great comment, we'll add that on there.
Anything else? Okay, next item, thank you so much, again, I think it's great. We need to approve the May meeting minutes, Megan sent those out to everyone, I hope you had a chance to look them over. If there are no changes, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
It's been moved that we approved the meeting and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we'll discuss and receive the recommendations from the subcommittee on the third quarter applications. Turn the time over to Councilman Stromberg.
So, as I pull this up, one thing I do want to call out, as we've gone through and we've talked really over the last couple of years, I do think we've gotten where our scoring finally shows the, what we needed, right? Not everyone is scoring the same and you'll see that and Megan sent it out, so hopefully saw, we see that difference. So I think we've got the application and the scoring where we need to, to help. There is one area that I will call out where we may want to make a small change to the application just to help. But overall, I do think we've gone, gotten in a good spot for this. So thank you to all of the subcommittee for their feedback as we went through and did this. So, before we look at the scores, the recommendation and the funding requests, do you want to just almost kind of back up from a conversation we had back in May and it's the looking forward? Right, I, we need to keep in mind what's coming, we just talked about the growth and how are we going to do that? So, as we think about where we're going to, you know, put these funds, where we need funds in the future. So we know Mid Valley is out there. The hope is the state's going to cover a lot of that, but we're still going to have to connect to it. There may be pieces that as a county, we're having to do. Sheep Lane is on there, we heard about it last time, they did apply, we'll look at that. So a good example, because it kind of shows you how much money we may need for some of these roads in the future. Thirty-third Parkway, Village Boulevard, finish out Drew Bay and everything you have going there. So, again, just keep in mind as we look at this, where we're going to need money in the future. So, where are we at? Approximately in both third quarter and corridor, we're sitting at eight point five million today. One's a little higher, I think one's a little lower, but we're close enough, we'll call it eight five. Third quarter does go up or has gone up approximately three million over the last year. So, again, kind of keep in mind with that. Corridor preservation about nine hundred thousand, did I read that those?
Yeah, can I mention?
Is that correct, Andy?
Yeah, that's correct, just mentioned one thing, on, on both of these, there's sales tax and they've, unfortunately with the economy, they've kind of gone flat on us this last year. And we've just, year over year, it's kind of flat, so that's when we just have to make sure we, we watch. It's, and before it was going, growing pretty steadily, but this last year it's kind of flattened out, so.
Okay, so again, that, just to keep in mind as we go through where we're at, what we might need, so. Okay, so as far as third quarter, Twilla County did request funds for, to finish out the Mormon Trail. This goes along with the five million that was the federal grant. So it came in as a score of eighty-six. It is for, the full amount would be one point six five million on that. Then here's where we may have to make a little change to the application. So as you recall, we did a presentation, I think it was back in May, about the pavement assessment. Cog said, hey, yeah, let's do that. So Twill County put it in the application, but it was really on the part of cog as a whole. Anyway, so you can see they scored a sixty, for sixty-five thousand. And I'm just going to pull up the other one, which is the utility fee assessment. Just reminding everyone, this is looking to be able to add a fee, an impact fee, utility fee on businesses or churches for what they're, the impact they're making on those roads. So, again, a request from cog to the county to put in the application. What I want to point out with both of these, and you can see we scored them at sixty, but we found they were kind of hard to score because our scoring was based upon putting in new roads or repairing new roads, not really this, so that might be something we need to look at. Also, the thought was, when we have this type of request where cog is just asking an entity, regardless of who it is, if it's the county and just saying, hey, cog is asking for this, we've kind of already seen we want this done, maybe there's just a way to put that this is like cog pre-approved and it gets an automatic fifty points or, or something like that. So, something we will look at in the future, maybe this is the only time that's going to happen, but it just would make it easier to score and put in that, hey, this is something that as a body, we already know we want, so it gets scored as such, so. Anyway, so those three requests are one point seven five million. So again, if you kind of think through where we're at, where we're growing, are we going to keep doing? That's the request on third quarter. Corridor preservation, so Erda, and just so you know, they are in order of points, just for your quick reference. So Erda under third quarter preservation came in at eighty for two hundred and twenty-four thousand. Twilla City, for their project, scored sixty, six hundred and forty-five thousand. Vernon scored forty-four point five for fifty thousand. Stockton, forty-three point five, sixty-five. I'm going to stop there just for a second. So if you look at Erda and Twilla City, you can see where we get that difference in the scoring to kind of help prioritize. One thing I did notice though still, and but I think we've kind of tried to correct this, you'll see Vernon and Stockton still scored very low when you compare them even to Twilla City or just the types of projects. That again, and that's kind of why I have those asterisks there, where we talked about being able to just that automatic money that there would have available to them. I think this kind of shows why that would be important to Rush Valley Vernon and Stockton to say, hey, you know, here's this, you know, roughly fifty thousand or some amount that you can get. Anything above that, you're going to have to, we're going to score and see how you are. They're just population and the amount they're making it for, even though I think we fixed our scoring, it seems that they're still going to come in scoring lower than anyone else. So I think that's why it may be important to really look at that, so. And I held off because then we do have Grantsville City's request for Sheep's Lane. And really when you look at it, it scores low because it was, you know, almost an eighteen million dollar request. And so when you look at it as a per user, even when you took everyone in the county, it's just a high cost per, per user, so that's, it ends up with this, the full score of thirty-nine. But I did want to show that because that's where we have to think about where are we planning for, right? I mean, obviously today, I mean, if you put both of those funds together, that's seventeen million, that itself wouldn't cover up, but that wipes out everything. But I think that's where we got to think about, how are we planning for the future for some of these projects that are going to come along, so. Yeah, so total within corridor preservation was just shy of nineteen million. So, recommendations coming out of the subcommittee. We would fund or recommend that Twill County get the full one point six five. That would allow Mormon Trail to be finished up, get the, all the matching funds and everything done for the federal five million and Mormon Trail up to basically Grantsville City limits would be done at that point in time. To fund both of the requests through cog for the road study as well as the impact fees. And then for corridor preservation, the four applications, obviously leaving Grantsville out unfortunately for those that have to use Sheep's Lane for now, so.
It'll be a little more difficult from now on.
Yeah, so, so that has third quarter funded, coming in at that one point seven five and corridor preservation at nine hundred and seventy-five. So if we think about what came in, corridor preservation this last year ends up being a wash. This year we, if we did this, we would spend everything that came in. So it doesn't necessarily help us grow that, but you could do that. And we're just a little bit more than half of the third quarter if we funded all of these, so. Any questions?
Okay, so like on the third quarter, so it's a one point, say one point eight million and we've got three million, so we're putting one point two million into savings?
Yes.
For next year? Okay, and so for the corridor preservation, so it's nine hundred and seventy million. It's about a wa, like I said, it's a wash, so we still have eight, five million in there.
Correct.
So with the Sheep Lane, because a lot of people still use that, is there any way you could partially fund it? Part of it or instead of doing the whole seventeen million?
That'd probably be, I, I, we could, I mean, I know in the application they indicated something like that. I think the problem with trying to score, there wasn't a number for us to try and score, so.
And then also too is, one thing is that, you know, a few slides back, you brought up that this car is a Mid Valley Highway. Now, I thought we had some time back, we had a discussion with UDOT, correct me, no, yes or no? But the, that we needed some east-west corridors and stuff like that, so that's where the thirty-third avenue or whatever it is. So what about, it would be easier for us to get some funding from UDOT to do the Mid Valley Highway if we did some of these east-west corridors?
What, whether, I mean, I don't know, I'm looking to see if I get any nods, but whether it's easier or not, I don't know that I could say it's easier. But again, I think those were just five, the, as I was putting this together this afternoon, those five were, I think we know there's more, there's more east-west, those are just ones that we've talked about. But you're right, Nando, I mean, we, we need those as well.
I know, but Twilla City's been putting a lot of effort into trying to preserve some property and stuff like that. So we could do this Mid Valley Highway, that's really important to, you know, we got what, fifteen stoplights from Twilla to Lake Point now, the fourteen or sixteen?
Feels like fifteen.
Kind of once, it was thirteen, I think about two or three more since.
Right.
What's wondering is, you know, me and Stockton said a hell of a lot of time going through Sheep Lane than it does going through Twilla, you know? So I just thought maybe try to put some more effort into the Mid Valley Highway, try, or do something to try to get this north-south traffic out of Twilla, maybe get some haul trucks out of Twilla too and, or.
So maybe, yeah, Jared has a question. Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
Let me just speak a little bit, you were talking about the Mid Valley Highway, thank you, that's a leeway into this. We met with UDOT and thank you. And sat down with them and said, can you give us some realistic times? And they were looking at the second phase somewhere around twenty thirty-five. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what Robert told us. And then the third phase would be around twenty fifty. Well, I'm not going to be here, none of us in this room is going to be here. So we said, well, how do you move that up? How do you, why do you move that up? So we talked to some lobbyists in Lincoln Hill, other places, and they said, you have to hire somebody who knows what they're doing to go fight for it. And we said, well, we've been working with UDOT and they said, all the other counties and cities do this. And when we brought it up to UDOT and they said, we recognize that that's a political pool and yes, many of them do that and they're able to bring those projects to a higher level and get them done quicker. So, we discussed that as a county and we said, we're not going to wait until twenty fifty. We've got to hire somebody to be able to do that faster. And one of the things that they, they had brought up said, we need to have everybody on the same page. Because you can't say you got a project and then when they talk to the leader and say, no, that's not, he goes, that, that will kill everything. So if everyone's willing to write a letter and say Mid Valley Highway is a high priority, then they can go after it and he, this lobbyist said he will go and he said he can get it done sooner. And that's what they do, unfortunately, that's the way it's done today. I mean, we would hope that there's no crime, but every city and county has a police department, right? To, to make sure everybody, so that's the avenue that you're going to go if you want to move that up unless you, we want to wait until twenty fifty to get it done. So I have a draft of a letter and I'll have you guys look at it.
Jared, can I step in just one second? You want to mention on Tuesday, the council approved hiring this consultant. And so we're moving forward, we have to, I mean, with the growth that's coming, we have to. So the council approved that, that, that contract. And so what he's passing out is kind of what the, what the plan is, but we would, if, and Brittany would have a letter that she could send out, it's a letter of support that you support moving forward with trying to get into Mid Valley, we're all together on this, that's what we'd like to send out. But this is just kind of an informational, here's, here's where we're at.
Did I say anything wrong? Okay, that's, you know, in working with our partners, you know, it's been great to work with. So let me just tell you the first phase and if you're not sure how the first phase got done, we were, you know, this was approved in the seventies, right? And then as we were, years went by, as we started working on it, there was a little bit of movement, but a lot of movement happened when Gail Miller said, you can have our lobbyists and start working. All of a sudden it went boom, right up to the top of the line. That's the way it works, that's how it happens. And so it got done. And that's how it's going to happen now unless we want to wait till twenty fifty.
It'd be a mess everywhere if we have to wait till that long. Everywhere will suck. We'll be as bad as Eagle Mountain, worse.
Well, that, actually that, that's what I brought up, we said, UDOT said, we, we do not want you to become like Eagle Mountain and that is a mess. And so, just frank conversations and that's what reality is.
There is a, I'm saying, is there any way, I know that you thought like that, but you've got several pathways for this Mid Valley Highway. Is there any way that we could put some of this corridor money or something else in, cog money till we can start buying some property before, because now Twill City's going to try and do that, but now right there by the road tracks, where it was going to go over the road tracks, you've got all these industrial buildings that have been built there, so it's going to be costing a hell of a lot more now. So I just wonder if there's some of the property in between.
Can I answer that question just quickly? We've done a master transportation plan that looks at exactly that. Looks at not just the corridors that we've talked about, but other ones for the future. So we have others on there as well and it would be a perfect use for corridor preservation to start going after some of those corridors before they get built out. That's, we, we have a plan for that. And so if that's something that cog would like to look at, we could start to bring those forward and we can start to program which one we think is going to be the most important and start using some of the corridor preservation to get the corridors before it's too late.
One thing that we discussed is cog members a couple of meetings ago is to have a discussion each time we meet about corridor preservation and third quarter sales tax monies. And how, if there's a project that we all agree in, there's no sense of, you know, maybe one year where you all have to just say, we're going to swallow our requests and we're going to sell Twilla County, go after the properties in this, use three million dollars in corridor preservation or whatever you have to do. And that's, that's got to be an ongoing discussion, I believe, I don't think it can happen tonight. We've already met as a committee, it's already been proposed, but it's definitely something that should be part of our future conversation.
So like our next cog, we start maybe going forward on this maybe a little bit, so we start working on this instead of waiting.
It should, it should be a part of every agenda from now going, a conversation on third quarter and corridor preservation.
So I'm talking about as far as corridor preservation for the Mid Valley County, is what I'm talking about, trying to get that.
Well, I think Andy, maybe it might be good at our next meeting to have a presentation of your priority.
Yeah, we, we could bring the county master wide and then those that, those that have a master plan as well if they would like to present as well, and here's the master plan that we have.
As long as Vernon Rose are at the top, we'll go with it. I'm teasing. But no, I think it's a great idea, Nando, I think you, you're hitting it right on.
I know that Twilla City's spent a lot of effort, money trying to get this going through from.
And, and you know, and I, I feel for Mayor Kritzlow and Sheep Lane, I, you know, I, we're going to have to do something there. And, and maybe that's where another thing, we can have Grantsville City apply for a grant and once again, we can all show our cooperation by signing a letter of- by signing a letter of of approval as well, that we're on board as a county. Uh, and maybe that would help get some money, but to, to help build that road, so. Any more comments or questions on third quarter sales tax?
It's a little unrelated, Mr. Chairman, but we got a few people here. Was the E I S for Mid Valley Highway ever finished with actual preferred route declared?
Yes.
Good.
All the more, all the more reason to, to really work on corridor preservation.
Yeah, that's, that was, I was wondering, Nando, talk about that, and when the the buildings were built there on the edge of Tula, corridor where it should be, it never been, had, wasn't declared, so it's kinda hard for Tula City to say, you can't build here because we have a road here, without something saying, this is where the road needs to be, so.
Mayor Winn, would you mind giving your little update with the depot?
Sure.
You want the mic?
Sure.
We pass it around to you.
We'd be on the mic for the recording.
Mayor Winn has done some work, and I want her to give an update.
So just this week, we we received an update from UDOT and the Mid Valley Highway Committee that's working on this and their subcontractors, that the Army Corps of Engineers has now issued a permit for work that can begin, at least access to the property, for the easement only on that depot property. It, it's about half a mile, maybe about half a mile, um, that is the easement. So the permit is just, is the first step, there's, there's only one more step, so we're getting there, we've only waited how many years for the first step? But the permit gives them, uh, UDOT, that opportunity to go in and maybe start putting up some fence, uh, because it will need to be fenced, because it's got Army Depot property, property on both sides, federal government. Um, or maybe they could get a design started for what the road might be. They believe in the next six months, hopefully by the end of the year, is what the Army Corps of Engineers says, they will be able to give the final agreement to UDOT to be signed, to give them access to that property and the easement to build the road. This section of the road is not a divided highway like what you see now. It is more of my understanding, and what they told us was kind of like a redwood road, we we don't want redwood road. Okay, but 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 more of a, of a four-lane, maybe a center median of some kind, you're not gonna be making left-hand turns off the road, because you're gonna have a fence there, but it will be a smaller type road. So when we knew that's what they were doing with the design of this easement, we said to UDOT, let Tula City have an, have an agreement with you to allow us to build a temporary road on that easement, a two-lane road, maybe if we need, we we have access to utilities, we can lay utilities, that's part of the agreement. Um, but let us build a two-lane road through there, just to get the connection completed. Now, there still is property between the end of what we call Tula Boulevard, which comes up between the Technical College and Utah State University Science Building, where Leitner-Poma is, that road ends at seven hundred south. That's, that's also a redwood road type, it was built for trucks. Um, we still will need to connect there, between there and the Army Depot. But that property is either owned by Tula City RDA or a group called Tula Growth that we are still working with. They are very open to trading property or uh, is letting us use the property for a road without having to buy it. So I'm not in support of using corridor preservation to buy up the land, because Tula City would be silly to charge you for it, let's just get the road in there. We believe that because you, uh, Mid Valley and the funding is so far in the future, and and I hope the lobbyist thing works. I would love for that to happen and get it all the way through, but doing phase two does us no good without phase three. We need to get the connection done between the beginning of Mid Valley that exists now and out to SR thirty-six, which takes us right up Sheep Lane. So I think that if things don't go well, and we can't get the hundreds of millions that we need to get the Mid Valley Highway done, that we spend, or we try to get the twenty million to fix Sheep Lane, bring them up one twelve. We may need to work a little bit on some widening, how that, I mean, at least the road is there. We are in, uh, right now surveying and going to be improving Utah Avenue just over the railroad tracks to widen there, so that we can make a dedicated right-hand turn lane to get them on Tula Boulevard. And then if we've got the temporary road and in the easement, we get them off of Main Street, we we get them out there. Those truck drivers coming from the south don't want to come down Main Street, they don't like cars, they don't like traffic. They wanna get off of that road, there will be a couple of stoplights that they're gonna have to get, you know, traffic signals that'll have to go through, but not the fourteen that you gotta go through, Nando. Um, and it, it really will help, and and this has gotta be cheaper than building the whole Mid Valley Highway. If if we get the money for it, great, build the whole thing, get it all done. But if you're just gonna do another section and not finish the south end, it makes no sense, it just doesn't. But we, we, Tula City have had a monthly meeting with UDOT for now two years, at least, two years. And it it's slow, and it is, it drags way too slow for me. We do have a, our next meeting scheduled for Monday morning, and so I doubt that we're gonna have a newer update than we just got. But we are willing to work to get that road put through. Um, if we do have more businesses locate out there, they have to help us build the road too. So there, there's ways to make that happen, but Tula Growth has been a great company to work with, an organization that, like I say, they own some of the property, that we believe we can get that section of the road done and the easement if we get held up with funding from the state or whoever we gotta get to get this, the rest of the Mid Valley Highway done. But it's not gonna work without Sheep Lane being repaired, so that has gotta be a part of it. You, we, we can't put more trucks on Sheep Lane and get them off thirty-six when it's not been repaired. So as we talk about supporting each other, federal grants or state grants or wherever we can find to help Grantsville get that done, that also needs to be a priority.
Mayor, what do you anticipate like miles per hour, I mean, what's keeping those trucks from coming down Coleman now?
Coleman is not a truck route, those uh, pro- or residents that live on that road, they, their, their driveways come right out onto that road. That has never been a truck route, we still ticket trucks that are going to and from, if they're delivering in the area, we have to let them. But that is, that is marked and labeled, that is not a truck route, because even if they do come down Coleman, then where are they gonna go? Yeah, there's, there's no way, it's Mid Valley or whatever we wanna wanna call it to connect it out at this end. UDOT has been a supportive of allowing the city to work on this contract with them. Uh, and the federal government from the very beginning said, we don't care that Tula City puts that road in before you do. You get the easement, you put the road in, you just follow the rules, and like I say, I know there's fence. We made sure that they did, would allow us to put utilities, because we'd like to loop water lines that direction, that kinda makes sense. But um, we cannot complete the MOU with UDOT and Tula City until the federal government contract is finished with UDOT, so we make sure the language matches. I I saw something that was a draft that we had been given of the agreement that went to um, to the Army Corps of Engineers. And I kinda panicked a little bit, but they kept reminding me, it's a draft, it's a draft, that said that if UDOT did not complete the road within five years, it would revert back to the government. I'm really, really hoping that gets changed, because that's a deal killer for everyone, unless we can build it in five years. I I I don't know how that's gonna happen, maybe it's gonna have to be a dirt road, I don't know. But but again, we can't get our contract with UDOT finished until the federal government, but it's coming. By by telling us they got the permit, that is huge, that is a huge, huge sign, so.
Thank you.
We're plugging along.
Sorry, I, when I meant like corridor preservation, if we had some of this in place, we wouldn't have them building right there on Utah Avenue. Maybe we could move something up that, going up one twelve, I don't know, I'm just saying, do something. So I know you could work a lot on this and stuff like this.
Right now, I would prefer that they don't buy up buildings and take away my sales tax and my property tax on, on a, on a business that is producing revenue for the city and for the county. Um, buy up your land, that makes, that makes different, a difference, but if you're gonna buy up a, a building that's worth seventy million dollars, and it sits for twenty years, we just lost all that revenue. So corridor preservation is important, it needs to just be property.
Why are you saying buying the building, I'm just saying that maybe the future might buy the building, but I'm just saying up to the building.
Up to, yes.
Right, so it doesn't, the, the, but all that would happen now is there'd be, you know.
You bet, that makes sense.
We were invited to have a, a group come together to come up with a corridor, to make it through that little section. And we came up with an idea, and they said, thanks for your idea, never mind.
So I, I've not been quiet about letting people know that I don't like their design um, on the, on, on the end, the south end. We, we did not miss one meet, one stakeholder meeting while they were doing all of the meetings on the, on what the routes should be. We never missed a meeting, and every time we said, could you look at this, could you look at this, could you look at this? They didn't want to use existing roads, they wanted to do the new roads, I I get that. But when it finally came back to us and it took out so many businesses that are already located there, and then coming through the business park, it, it took out the most valuable pieces of property to bring business to. And now business was, will say, I don't wanna be there, because Mid Valley Highway might happen. It has really hurt our economic development on that, on that business park, on that south end. But but because roads are already there, if we can use existing roads for, on a temporary basis until, till the Mid Valley can come in, it will, it will still benefit everyone, we'll get those trucks, again, the south end, they don't wanna go down Main Street, they want another way, especially those that are going to Peterson Depot or going out to Lakeview, they're coming from the south end, they don't wanna go all the way around and have to come back. So I, I just think it's a, it's an option, it's an option, we should.
Okay, thank you.
Grants, has Grantsville looked at anything else for Sheep Lane, or are they in the process of any other grant?
We will look.
But nothing currently. Well, yeah, I just didn't know if there was anything in the works.
There is one more thing that we don't know if this will, if this is possible or if it will help. But when the EIS was done, UDOT had said they had missed a federal law that had, had been passed in twenty seventeen that did not allow the EIS study to be wrapped up and completed without a pathway to move forward, they had to have some funding. That was when Tula City was working directly with the federal government to get the easement by ourselves. And then UDOT came to us and said, listen, we have to keep this going, let us get the easement. So we will ask our Transportation Commission, um, in fact, I think they were in this room the day they held that meeting. Um, and they were go, they asked for five hundred thousand dollars to get the easement through that depot property. And they voted, gave them the money, because they had to have money to keep going forward, and then they could publish the EIS, and it would be done. Well, we had already met with the federal government and knew that they only charged, and the, the time of their employees to create the records and their time to make it happen, they told us it would be under ten thousand dollars. So I went to UDOT and said, could we take the other four hundred ninety and use it to start designing, what, or put up, what could we do? That money was only set aside to get the easement, and on our last meeting with them, they asked the federal government, how much do we owe you, we've got a check ready to go, this is what you said, is that still true? It was just over nine thousand dollars. We know they have four hundred and ninety left, so what I am hoping, we'll find out Monday, if there's a possibility that we can make a request to UDOT to say, give us the other four ninety to keep the project going, by, let's get a road designed, let's get some kind of a design in and let's start it. I don't know if that will work, the project people that are on it with UDOT said, we couldn't, but you know, we don't take no for answer, we just keep asking. So if we have to go to the commission and ask if there's a way that that could be re-appropriated to keep the project going, I don't know why they wouldn't go with that, so. We might need letters of support from everybody to say, hey, yeah, let's keep it going.
And Jeff, you may have to bail me out on this, but when we were on the call with UDOT, one of the things that they asked for us to help them with is on the corridor pres- the corridor, they now have funding to get the corridor, and so we don't have to go after the corridor, they have a separate pot of money. And they asked, they said they'll go, start to go after it, if we can help them and say, here's a buyer, or here's an owner that we think you can work with, please give that to, it's Wan Lee, right, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken? Give it to her so she can start getting the rest of that corridor, and they, they already have funding, some, some funding set aside for that, so that's how we can help out.
Awesome, okay, well, she'll be on that meeting on Monday, and we'll find out how to do all that, and we'll make it happen.
Perfect, thank you.
Just know that that, that money, we can't, we can't make any purchases, um, go out and, and, and say, we're gonna buy this ground. It has to be on a willing seller basis, so that, that's, that's critical.
The willing seller has to basically come to you rather.
They necessarily come to us, but if they're willing to sell the, the, the ground that that's needed, that's, that's what needs to happen, because we can't, we don't have a, a, a project in place to move forward with actual acquisition. So we have to use the um, the Deal Re, Marta Deal, Deal Record or Preservation Fund. Once a project is funded, it reimburses that, that fund. So we're, we're, we're bar- essentially borrowing from the future until a project is, is in place, and then it reimburses it.
And if you look at some of the property owners along that, they're big, they're ivory, they're the Lakeview Business Park, Perry. They're the big ones that, it would really benefit them to be part of this, it'd be a great connection, so, these would be great people to work with, so.
Okay.
Sorry.
We'll go back to what Mr. Stromberg was talking about, uh, are there any questions or comments about the recommendation from the third quarter sales tax committee meeting, or committee proposal? If not, I'll entertain a motion, oh.
In our application, we said we would take anything that we, was available to us, and in that committee meeting, that was just like, no, we can't afford the whole seventeen million, we're not giving you anything, and that's disappointing, so.
So I, I'm gonna say, I think the problem with that, when we score, if we said we were gonna give you fifty thousand dollars, what are you gonna do with fifty thousand dollars, I mean, so I think, and I'm just using that, I think everyone needs to be aware, just to say, we'll take anything, if there's no phases or anything that says, I, you know, you know, on a seventeen million dollars project, you know, ten thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars is it even gonna provide anything? So I think, I guess that my feedback for everyone else, using that as the example, is if something's going to help at least provide a dollar amount that would say, well, we could get started with a phase one with X amount, that would allow the committee to say, okay, well, let's, now let's go through and score it as that. I think that was me looking at, I know we didn't have that conversation, but that's, to come and just arbitrarily come up with a number, what, what is that gonna provide, so?
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the items that were on the list to be, that are recommended by the committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, before we go into committee reports and updates, uh, I recognize the new commander at Dougway Proving Grounds, welcome. Would you like to take a minute and introduce yourself, and, and we'll pass the mic around, we got just the one mic, but we'll, we'd like to hear from you.
Thank you very much. Nope, just, um, again, hello, good evening, everybody, so I'm just, uh, coming out from. Nope, just, um, again, hello, good evening, everybody, so I'm just, uh, coming out from, uh, the Army War College, uh, just came into command last month on the sixteenth of July replacing Colonel James Harwell, I'm sure you probably met him, uh, the last couple of years, I'm known for a good little while and, and, you know, I'm a chemical officer, so we have a small career field, um, and have known about Dougway and have been looking from a distance for quite some time, so I'm happy to be out here. Uh, just a little bit about me, I've got a, um, a married, I have a wife and an eight-year-old son, so he just started school this week up at, um, the Dougway, Dougway School, third grade, and really just excited to, um, get to know and everyone in the area. Um, I've got about twenty-three years in the Army, uh, come, this year, and I was talking to a gentleman here, about twenty-eight total military service, um, I'm originally from Chicago, Illinois, but I was a military brat and grew up all over the place, so I, I'm not really from Chicago, I was just born there. But outside of that, just, um, again, happy to be here, this is a very different type of assignment, you know, for me, um, personally, it's a, I'm less operational, more about the, the business side of things, so it's really interesting also kinda getting to attend the events and meetings like this to kinda learn, um, what else goes on in the world outside of, you know, the, the Army, right? And as you all know, Chris Moore, he's taken care of me and brought me out to this one, I'm just gonna be participating as much as I can and as well to get to the, the local area, I mean, like, we've been here thirty days, but I think, uh, we haven't really had a chance to get out and about just yet, we've been to Twilla quite a few times, I mean, for shopping and stuff and down in the city, but, um, yeah, just happy to be here.
Thank you, welcome. Okay, uh, I better leave for that. Thank you and welcome. I know that, uh, our Army bases are, are very, very important to our county and we really appreciate, uh, I know as far as our community, Dougway is by far the, the biggest, uh, employer, so we appreciate you. Next item on the agenda are committee reports and updates, uh, your chance to speak, again, we'll get, begin with Marissa.
Okay, I, um, would like to report, I am on the Active Transportation Committee, um, representing Twilla, and, um, we had a very interesting meeting last week, if you have a chance to listen to the minutes, it might be interesting. Two major items, one was there's a new law about parking in bike lanes and how that can be a moving, site, moving violation now, doesn't really apply to a lot of us in the county, but it could in the future and something to take note of. The other big discussion was about traffic slowing measures, and Wes Jordan presented, they had a big study on different ways to slow traffic, um, they, I currently have the highest number of speed bumps in the state of Utah, so, um, they kinda compared a lot of different slowing mechanisms from roundabouts to speed bumps, and, you know, roundabouts being the most expensive probably and speed bumps being the least expensive.
Wes Jordan or South Jordan?
Wes Jordan, yeah, so, uh, that part of the meeting is probably about thirty minutes toward the end of the meeting, uh, very interesting, they did a lot, a big study, they even went to a different city to have, to have them look at the studies for an unbiased opinion, you know, so a lot of things they're trying to, um, implement there to slow traffic, and I know that's a concern throughout the county here, so something we can consider.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, WFRC, our economic development meeting is not for another couple of months, so I have nothing to report there, I wanted to welcome the Colonel and apologize that we were not there for change of command. Something happened to emails and we found out about it the day before and already had some other things going and could not make it because that's a tradition for us to go to that, but, but welcome to Twilla County and we're happy to have you here and love the US Army War College, I got to go to the National Security Seminar in twenty nineteen, so I learned so much about, about how great things are with the Army and I appreciate you very much, thank you.
I think you've heard enough of me tonight, so.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Jared?
You ever heard mine?
Right.
Nothing from Rush Valley.
CDBG, uh, grant, the how-to-apply workshop is gonna be on October sixteenth, uh, and you know that if you don't go to the workshop, you don't apply for the grant, so, uh, we gave a lot of money back this year, so encourage you to apply even though, you make sure you don't make any mistakes or you don't get anything. Yeah, and I, they didn't give it, we haven't.
Time or place yet?
Well, the ti, the place will be at, there at their office, there at Gateway, but, uh, and usually it's like in the afternoon, uh, three o'clock or two, two, three o'clock, but they didn't mention the time, they said they'd be getting worded out, so Christie said she'd be getting worded out, so that's all I have.
Got a couple of things, Mormon Trail, the county has a, uh, trailhead, it's hooked to a sewer tank, we have run the sewer, lined up to there, stubbed it out, we need that connected.
We're, we're waiting for our engineer costs to come back on that, and we have the design, so I've worked with Christie on it, we're just, we have one engineer, he's working on that for us, so.
We applied for another grant this year for recreation, whatever it was, and to help us with the, uh, sewer dump station along the West Street Mormon Trail, and we were told that they were gonna use all the money for the county, so I'm just letting you know that that's, uh.
You didn't apply for anything.
We applied last year.
Are you talking about the special service, the recreation special services today?
I will ask Christie and have her call you, but we were told that the county was taking everything.
Oh, was it, was it your tourism grant?
Maybe that was it.
Okay.
So.
So.
We will, we're building it, we will make sure that we take care of it.
So we can explain, the tourism grant used to have, so, this is good for everyone to know, um, the tourism grant used to have two sides to it, and it's been three years now since we've done the two sides, we only hand out the promotion funds and not the capital improvement funds, because once we chose to bond for the peak and the peak master plan, the funds are allocated to pay the bond for that, so we're paying all the, the bond off with those funds at the peak, so that's why those funds aren't available anymore.
Just good to know where we stand, thank you.
No, no.
And that's what we're stalking, but the Health Department, uh, I guess Grant, it was, kinda got confused, he showed up, I talked to him about due presentation, getting subsidy to present to you about the Health Department, so he was gonna come here, so he went to the one-on-twos to hit up the one tonight, so, uh, maybe I can try to come do a presentation next time.
Let's have him get on the agenda with Megan to make sure that he's on, on the agenda.
Nothing for Nick?
Mark?
Yeah, just, uh, well, school's back in session. Yeah, excited about that, but just wanna, a very sincere thank you to Twilla City, um, for all the help, it does at Peak High School and, and traffic flow and all that, and also to the county in Erda with Sandsbury Junior High, as we, uh, try to train people on how to get in and out of new schools and in that traffic flow, uh, we learned a lot the first couple of days and, uh, but we're making some adjustments and, uh, that'll get better as we go, but sincere thank you for all the, the help with, with everyone and helping us with those schools and, and elevating education here in the county, so.
Dougway?
So I, I did wanna remind everyone, so on Saturday for October, we're having our Global War on Terrorism Rock and Run, uh, that's the trail, you know, that's an ongoing yearly thing we've had, and last year we really focused in on global war of terrorism. So, uh, if you get a chance, come on out, and if you need anything, let me know and I will connect you with the folks that you'll heal with.
Anything from the county? All right. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting's adjourned.